All right. I would like to welcome everyone to the Joint Education Committee and the Finance and Operations Committee, roll call.
Counselors Clorio.
Here.
Toomey and Chairperson Counselor Nguyen.
Here.
And Madam Clerk, if you could call a roll for Finance and Operations, please.
Chair O'Connell-Novick.
Here.
Vice Chair Kamara.
Here.
And Member Mailman.
Here. Thank you.
Yeah, you probably want to say that, right?
Yeah, so now we'll be going into public participation. AJ?
Thank you, Chairperson Nguyen. Let's see here. Looks like we have a couple folks in, so I'm just going to read item number 1A, which is the virtual attendee call information. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, in order to ensure active public engagement, the City of Worcester currently allows for both in-person and remote participation at all City Council and Standing Committee meetings, including this one. To partake in the meeting, you may attend the meeting in person within the meeting location. You can follow the below link, which is listed on the City of Worcester's website under the Municipal Calendar section, or you can actually dial in on the phone number, which is also listed in the Municipal Calendar section, and I'll read here. Phone number is (929) 205-6099, and the Zoom access code for this particular meeting is (967) 3956-9567. If you would like to be heard during this portion of the meeting, we'd ask that you please raise your hand. To do so, it looks like we do have a couple folks in the attendee pool to raise your hand. You can either dial *9, or you can go to the bottom of the page. There's a Raise Hand function. You can click on that. And Chairperson Nguyen, at this time, no one is doing that, so I don't believe...oh, we got one now. Okay. Let's see here. We have Lori Ross. I'm just going to unmute Lori now. Let's see here. Lori?
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Hi. This is Lori Ross. Live in Worcester, and I just wanted to speak to item 4A, which is the School Safety Task What I wanted to share was that we've been providing research support to the School Safety Task Force. We did over the course of the task force work, and one of the features of that task force was a monitoring and evaluation plan. And so we've been just monitoring school-specific police incident data since the SLO model had been instituted, and so we've been looking at incidents that happened at the schools for which police are called from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And what I just wanted to share was that since January 1st, when the SLO model was instituted, there have been about 1,200 police check-ins at the schools, but the vast majority of these are simply the SLOs checking in at the school. There have been 390 incidents where it was not the SLO checking in, and I want to emphasize that these are not arrests. These are just incidents for which the police are brought to the school or called to the school. Just to provide a little bit more information, the numbers, when we compared September of 2021 to December of 2021, so this current school year but under the old model, as compared to the...from January 1st to current, the numbers of incidents that you might think about as safety incidents have remained virtually the same. And so I'm just going to highlight nine different kinds of incidents, and they include disorderly person, a threat, a fight, an assault, malicious mischief, person with gun, and assault with dangerous weapon. The numbers are virtually identical when we look at the two time periods. So for a disorderly person in the current time period, there's been 37; in the prior time period, there were 27. And for virtually every single other incident, the rates were the same. And I share all this to say that, you know, there were concerns that removing the SROs from daily presence at the schools would lead to more safety incidents at the schools. This data does not seem to indicate that. The areas where there are increases are some areas that indicate more of student distress, and particularly at some of the alternative schools where there had not been SROs prior. So I share that, you know, and if there's additional information that's requested, I'm happy to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. And at this time, no other folks are raising their hands. Chairperson Nguyen. Oh, we found...we have another person. It looks like a Parlee. If you could just provide your full name, your city, your town or residence, and then you can begin your testimony.
Yep. My name is Parlee Jones, and I'm a resident of Worcester, and I was actually part of the task force on 4A also. I just wanted to share that the MOU that you guys are looking at is just a generic copy that the state made available for use for any district that has SLOs or SROs, and our task force has requested that the Worcester Police Department and the public schools create their own MOU that reflects the current SLO model that we are using. And also with the changes in administration, we also felt that it was important to wait until the new superintendent is onboard for full input. So that's...I just wanted to make that statement, and hopefully you will agree with the task force that we need to slow it down and get something that is specific for Worcester.
Thank you, Parlee.
Thank you. And at this time, it does not appear that anyone else is raising their hands.
So item 3A, we will be holding. Do I need to read that? Do you want to read it?
I'm sorry, Counselor.
3A.
Sure. It's mostly there for procedural purposes. If you'd like, you could read it, and then just move right on to 4A from there.
All right. So we will be holding item 3A. Order of Counselor Toomey, request Standing Committee on Education meet jointly with the School Committee Standing Committee on Finance and Operations for the purpose of reviewing matters pertaining to public education for public libraries, arts, cultures, and higher education listed on their agenda. And we'll be moving to item 4A.
Let me do...if I can do the same procedural version. So our item that we'll hold is CMP 2-19, which is to consider a communication with the City Clerk regarding the City Council Standing Committee on Education and the School Committee Standing Committee on Finance and Operations to consider meeting jointly on a regular basis throughout the year concerning issues of overlapping interest. Madam Clerk, can we just have a roll call to hold that, please?
Yes. Chairman O'Connell?
Yes.
Just pop the pad. One second. Member Mailman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Third one is?
Member Kamara. Vice Chair Kamara.
Vice Chair Kamara. Thank you.
I'm here. Thank you.
Counselor Nguyen, would you like a roll call to hold as well?
Yes, roll call.
Thank you. Counselor Clorio?
Yes.
And Chairperson Counselor Nguyen.
Yes.
All right. Then we're each going to take up items that we have in parallel. So on the School Committee side, our item is called is labeled GB 1-343 from Administration to Consider Recommendations from the School Safety Task Force on the Removal of the School Resource Officers.
Yes, and on our Education Committee side, it's item 4A, Transmitting Information or Communication Relative to Recommendations from the School Safety Task Force on the Removal of School Resource Officers.
Do you want to open the conversation on your side, and we'll take it from there? Or would you like me to...all right. I was going to start actually by deferring to my colleagues for what opening comments they wanted to make regarding the task force and where we stand at this particular point in time. So Vice Chair Kamara?
As far as questions?
Or any comments in terms of where we're at with this process at this time?
Right. Because I...so I want to say thank you to Parlee and Lori Ross for that. One of the things that I do want to follow back on is that MOU that we just learned about. If there could be a copy sent, because I don't...I don't know if we do have any of that information available to us, but it would be great for us to kind of have that information, and then the idea of us creating our own out of the general MOU. It seems that there's like a model that is out there, so I would appreciate for that to be shared with us, and are we going to be going towards like, once she mentioned, once the new superintendent comes in, for us to start drafting our own? So how's that process going to be like?
I think that's probably an open question at this point.
Right. Okay.
Yes. Member Mailman?
Thank you. I would just say that from our end, we anticipated that an MOU was going to come to the superintendent and to...I think the chief were going to be working on this MOU, and we were supposed to see it perhaps a month ago, or it was going to come forward then. We have seen nothing and have really received no reports from the administration about the status. There were two things on my mind. One is the MOU that's supposed to be in place from January through August of this year, and then in addition, another MOU that is, I thought, kind of based on that statewide agreement that would take effect in September. And so we have no information, and we felt like it was maybe on the city side that had information about where this MOU was, and Vice Chair Kamara just asked for a copy of it, so that would be great.
Thank you for that. I think that the main, I think, distress maybe, I mean, not to put too strong a term on it, on the part of the School Committee at this point, is that the timeline that actually we were given quite clearly in the presentation that you gave us actually back in December, was that there was going to be this interim step of an MOU that was going to be given at the end of January, which then would be effectively in place and be evaluated, which of course is a best practice, for exactly the kind of information that Professor Ross was giving us in terms of what was working, what wasn't working, and then moving forward. I will say that I entirely agree with what Ms. Jones said in terms of the incoming administration, frankly, the incoming administrations on both sides, but that continues to leave me in a very uncomfortable position as a School Committee member, because as the legal body of the school district, there is no legal agreement that's actually governing the liaison model that we currently have. And when we've asked a question, the response that we got was we were still using the previous legal agreement, but the previously agreement doesn't actually cover current process. And so I will say that I find myself somewhat in a bond, because I entirely agree with absolutely deferring to incoming administration, again, on both sides, in terms of process moving forward. By the same token, school doesn't get out until the end of June. We still have a decent amount of time left, and it is distressing to me, both as a School Committee member and frankly as a resident of the city, to have something that's so important that doesn't actually have any policy governing it at this point.
Am I able to speak? For some reason, I can't get a...it won't take my visual.
Well, I think, Madam Superintendent, I think we had some opening remarks from the members first, and certainly I did see your hand. I was going to defer to the counselors for their opening comments first.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Clorio, would you like to share anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple things. First and foremost, I have been very supportive of the SROs in the schools since 2015. It showed that there was a significant drop in incidents, so I'm hesitant about, and I didn't vote for this plan moving forward, just in all transparency. That being said, I hope that it is successful, and I hope that we have good numbers going moving forward. And I was wondering a couple things. One, if we could, Chairman Nguyen, if we could have a, maybe Chairman's order to get...I'm not sure the woman's name that called Lori.
Lori Ross.
Lori Ross. If we could get the final numbers that Lori was talking about afterwards, because that would be impressive if we, you know, I thought that was good that we got a comparison from the first, I always say semester, even though it went on on semesters, but the first half of the year compared to the second half of the year, that would be good. And plus, it is a time where the students are all in, it's hard to compare when the students were doing, you know, virtual classes, so that would be important, if that would be acceptable. The other thing that I had some questions of, also if Madam Chair would allow a Chairman's order, I'd like to see some of the training programs that will be used. Under here, we talk about the whole school strategies. So what are we using for the cultural responsive? What are we using for equity-focused practices? What are we using for restorative justice? What programs are we using to back up and do the training? I'd be very interested in training, it says trauma, bias, and anti-racism. I'd be very interested in seeing actually the training that we're going to offer our Worcester Police Force. Also, will those...it will be that...will that training also be offered to the administration of the schools as well, or is this just for the police force in general, Madam Chair? Those are two of my more pressing comments or observations at this time. Also to moving forward, I think it's important, and I'm just going to emphasize again what Lori said, I really want to see Worcester-based research. While I respect that this was a very well put-together report, a lot of the research in here is more generalized to, you know, the nation or the state. It wasn't really Worcester-based research. So, okay. I think that's it for now, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think I would like to thank the folks who actually worked on the task force. You know, I know it was the work of Black Families Together, LEON, the Latino Empowerment Organizing Network, and the NAACP, Worcester Interface, Worcester Research Bureau, and a lot of community leaders, and so I just want to uplift, you know, this amazing report of recommendations that they provided. I think the other thing that I've been hearing that's concerning for many folks is, you know, the change of SLOs to SROs. A lot of folks are wondering, you know, is it just a name change? Is it just a location change of now that we, you know, kind of removed the officers to a different location, but their function is still the same? You know, is it actually different? And so I think that's something that I would like to really kind of think about and challenge us to think about, you know, what does it mean to create impact, you know, as we have this executive order to remove SROs? Like, are we just replacing it with something that's almost similar? So I just want to uplift the things I've been hearing in the community, and I agree with Counselor Clorio. I would love to do a Chairman's order on requesting the city manager to work with the School Safety Task Force to give us any updates on the work that they've been doing, as well as providing us with a report on the data that they've been collecting on school disciplinary measures, as well as school incidents, you know, with SLO intervention, since they've been doing this work. And I think the other thing that, you know, is concerning to me, as most of my colleagues mention, is the MOU. I think it is kind of a problematic thing when we're functioning without a legal contract. And I also don't think that we have to rush, right? Like, I think community wants us to take the time to really implement the things that they want in the policy. And so I think in the meantime, I would like to do a Chairman's order on requesting the city manager get a report from the city solicitor on, you know, a legal report on whether, as of right now, in the meantime, as we're having a Worcester-specific SLO policy model, should we be adopting the state model of the MOU just in the meantime, as we try to really adapt and really implement people's opinions? I think that's really important, that we have some sort of legal contract. And yeah, and I do agree with community folks who are saying, let's pause, let's really make sure that the impact that we want is part of the policy. I think we would be doing a disservice if we just rushed into doing a generic policy that people actually, we fought for this, we advocated for this, and now we just kind of settle on something generic. Yeah. Is there anything else?
I guess I...you don't think it's... Fair to ask the Assistant City Manager if he has an update on what it is.
Yeah. Should we do that now?
Yeah. I can do that before you ask. Yeah. So we...I believe that we actually have...I wanted to give you a chance to speak. First of all, if you actually have any update for us in terms of the legal process, and I believe that actually is also probably what the superintendent wanted to address, but I was going to...we usually try to defer to the city, particularly when they're hosting, so didn't know if you wanted to speak first.
Sure. Thank you. Eric Batista. So in related to the contract, you are correct, we don't have an MOU in place that's...the one that we previously had was an SRO model, and that expired. In the back and forth between the iterations that we reviewed, we took the template of the Attorney General's Office. That was the template, the SRO Attorney General template that was distributed to the state that DESI also approved. And so the challenges with that SRO document or that template is that it speaks to that, a school resource officer. So a lot of the language and the implications of that officer is still, is the interactive day-to-day within the schools. Our liaison models, our officers not in the schools. They're called upon when needed. And so when we try to fit in that template into our current model, right away, we provided the first draft to the task force. The task force realized it right away that that was an issue. And so collectively, we made a decision to hold back. I brought it to our legal department, and we couldn't alter that document as much as we wanted to. Basically, the law department said we needed to do major surgery to that document to really connect it with what our current model was. And so at that point, it was a decision, do we take the time to do that surgery or create a whole new document? And that is going to take some time. Do we do that now and try to take the time to rush it now to get something in now? Or do we just put it, like Counselor Nguyen mentioned, do we just put it on hold and wait until the new superintendent comes onboard, and we really take the time? And then utilizing the data that Dr. Lori Ross had provided, getting that feedback from what's happened overall this past semester will help inform that MOU, and maybe have to tweak the model itself, just like you mentioned, Counselor. We may have to tweak that model based on the input that we get. So that...could that be something that we explore this summer? The task force gets back together, have further discussion, review the data, review the document, and then provide a better, more document that reflects our city and our specific model. But it's something that I think we could explore in terms of putting something in place. We could try to take the current expired one and maybe change a little bit of the language and put something in place now, if that's the desire of the committee. We could definitely try to look into doing something like that.
The...so thank you for that. And I appreciate your chair order there to actually explore effectively what our kind of legal standing is, because I'd be interested both of the city and the school side on that. In terms of your comment, I think the one thing I would add is that I would agree, in fact, I would add to the comment that was made regarding the incoming superintendent. I know that the model that they use in the district where she's coming from is one much more similar to what we currently are contemplating.
I'm sorry. The last...I didn't hear you clearly.
So the model that they use in San Bernardino is one that's much more close to what we're currently using, rather than one that we previously were using. So in terms of having her speak to that, I think is probably effective. You were going to...
Yeah, okay.
Just want to make sure that we're all being fair.
Yeah, so I just want to disfer knowledge, understanding. So are you saying that the current SLO model is similar to the one in?
San Bernardino.
Okay.
Yes.
One, that's good. My other thing is that, from what I also hear from Eric, is so it seems like this task force is an ongoing task force, so like, it has not been dissolved, right? So they're going to continue until the MOU, until Lord knows when. So it's just going to be a continuous task force?
That's...that was the plan from the initial...now, we haven't met in a number of months, but the initial intent of the task force is to come back after the school year, come back and review the data points, review MOU process, and then provide further, you know, recommendations or whatnot to the committees.
Okay, awesome. So my other question that I have that, so, because for the construction and drafting of the MOU, that would be per our district for SLOs, so are we going to have support from that task force? Because it seems as if that, you know, I know our School Committee folks, they're, we're all up to par, but I want to also say that because the task force was created, and I'm pretty sure they've been through this process, so my question is, are they going to be supporting the creation and drafting of the MOUs with the School Committee when we have a new superintendent?
So the drafting of the MOU happens between the superintendent and the chief of police, and so they work with their both prospective attorney body, and then they have to present that to the legislative body for review and adoption.
Okay. It's okay, so because I thought I heard before, School Committee members.
No, just we end up at the, kind of the other end of it.
The other end of it.
The other end of it, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Member Mailman?
So the superintendent and the chief will work together for, and then present it to your task force, and at the same time, it will come to School Committee or after you guys, something like that. My question is, is DESI or the AG's office, we cannot doubt we are the only, of the 351 cities and towns, I'm sure we're not the only one with a liaison model, and so has DESI and the AG's office not contemplated a SLO model?
That I'm not sure, and we haven't approached that question to them yet.
I actually can answer that if you'd like.
Please.
So the model language actually came about as a result to a change in state law, so that the AG's office and DESI were charged with doing that, and it specifically was around the question of police in school buildings rather than an SLO model. But you're leading in a direction that was going to, which is, it seems to me that it would behoove at least the School Committee to send something out to the districts across the state and say, hey, does anybody have a model like this? Because we would be interested in language. Is that something that the city would be open to?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm...we don't necessarily need a motion to do that. I'm happy to actually just send out that inquiry. Is we good? I was going to... What I would do is I would actually just send out something over the MASDA listserv and say, hey, does anybody have this? And then would bring it back to the full committee and share it to the, if that works for my colleagues. Is that...okay. We've got resources, we should use them. Madam Superintendent, I believe that you had your hand raised earlier. Anything to add?
Through the chair. I'm not sure if Superintendent Benenda fell off.
Okay.
Let me see here, just kind of go through the names.
Find out later.
I don't believe she's on at this time.
All right. So with my colleague's permission, I was going to actually pretty much swipe the chair's order from Counselor Toomey here in terms of asking for that data to come to us as well. Sometimes things come through unevenly when we do these joint meetings. Is there anything else that either of you would like to make sure comes to us as part of this beyond the updates that it seems are happening? I guess my only question is, is there a timeline? Or is that kind of dependent on new administration?
The timeline for the MOU? So we...so based on the order to try to get some legal feedback related to getting something on now, we can...I can work on that right away and hopefully have something back to counsel on that. The...on the timeline of the ideas to have a MOU, a final MOU in place before the beginning of school, that's the hope, or that's the plan. We want to take the summer to work through that. So we want to get the feedback that happens through the semester, work with Dr. Lori Ross on all the data, review it, have some conversations. And then, right now, we're actually, one of the discussions that we've had in place that the Research Bureau helped us design was a survey that we can survey the teachers, students, and try to get some feedback. So we're going to be reaching out to the superintendent to, you know, work through that and figure out a way or mechanism to get them to be able to share some feedback. So then it helps more qualitative, not only qualitative, but also quantitative data for the decision-making on the SOU, I mean, MOU.
Okay.
Thank you for that. I believe Counselor King is on the line. I would like to speak. AJ?
That's correct. Counselor, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? I think my video is disabled, but that's fine.
Good evening, I guess, everyone. I'm glad to see this meeting moving forward. I just wanted to comment on the lack of an MOU and also the idea of pushing this out. The, and timelines. So, when we talked about timelines, the timelines were in December when that, when the committee approved of the safety plan. One of the sticking points was the MOU. You know, if you think about it, kids and families, kids and families that are, you know, have their children in school and are perhaps engaging with police and the school with the police, there needs to be parameters around, what are they called, given the shift in model? You know, what's the procedures or protocols for, you know, school administrators, school staff, educators? So that when there is an engagement, the families and the students have an expectation of what that is and what the parameters are. Additionally, when it comes to the police officers, they need to know the rules of engagement as relates to working with our youth, our students, and their families and school staff. The idea of that was that in December, when this was moved forward, the timeline expectation was that in January of 2022, we'd have an interim MOU in place that would have come back to the task force prior to it moving forward, which never occurred. We're now in May, January, February, March, April, May, five months out, and there's no interim. As a father of two kids in Worcester Public Schools, it's important that all parties know the terms of engagement, even on an interim level. So, while it sounds good that we're going to kick it out till August, I want to just clarify, there never was an intention to have a completed, full-fledged, vetted model prior to August. That never, that the timeline was August before school starts for the full, fully vetted and thorough MOU. An interim was necessary, and I believe remains necessary, so that folks understand the rules of engagement, and that's in the best interest of all parties involved. And I'll just leave that there. I appreciate the work of the task force. I know the school committee has some work to do on this. City side has some work to do. But folks, the police, again, and other stakeholders should know the rules of engagement and what has changed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor King, for bringing that up. I also think that, for me, made me think about the ways in which, you know, I am very grateful for the School Safety Task Force, and I do wonder how do we bring in parents, teachers, and students into the conversation this summer as we're, you know, in the process of creating our MOU and hoping that there's a way in which we could really do that outreach, survey folks, even pull them in onto the task force, or even stipending folks to do this work.
Any other comments? Yep. Vice Chair Kamara.
Thank you. So, that's a really great thing, comment you just mentioned, Counselor Tuan Nguyen. But I do want to go back to what Counselor King just mentioned. So, as far as us not having any plan in place right now, are we thinking about drafting something that is going to hold us between now and August for which then, in August, during the summer months, then we are going to be gathering parents and kids to create the actual MOU? Is that something that we can consider?
So, if I'm understanding the chair order correctly, and correct me here if I'm wrong, the notion is to at least have the city solicitor go figure out what our legal standing is right now without one?
Right.
Not rush into anything, but make sure we're legally covered? With the idea, as again, if I'm understanding correctly, that there would be this continued, this work that would then be with the new superintendent, with the task force, to actually draft something that's Worcester-specific, that actually is based on the liaison model rather than on anything else?
Right.
Is that what everybody else thinks we're doing here too? Okay. Good.
Yeah, and with that, I would just like to really uplift Counselor King on his, you know, notion of history and the timeline, right? Like, I hope we commit to having something by that time, because it is, I think, frustrating for community folks to have something be stated to be done for January, and now we're looking at a semester difference. And I could understand the ways in which, like, data is going to be powerful for us to, you know, really build something out, but that we commit to the things that we have said and that we would do for our community to feel safe with the new policy.
And I would just say also that I, maybe this is a communication between bodies too, that if there are resources that the school committee has in terms of places that we can go for set, for models or for samples, you know, please always feel that you can actually contact us directly for that, because that's, that is something that we tend to have a wealth of resources to, simply by accident of position. I actually am even tied into national networks on that, so we'd be glad to offer what we have.
Counselor Calor, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to, I think that was a great idea to engage parents and more students in the process, because I think one thing this, I know this task force has been meeting, but I think the lack of community engagement, not outside of different groups, but I mean, true community engagement, like we've had in other, that we've had in other issues in the city, I think is lacking in this. So, I support it to be a little bit more transparent and to engage some of these parents and maybe a little bit more of an open sort of communication and dialogue. So, I support that, Counselor Nguyen. Thank you for that.
Is there anything else folks wanted to talk around the policy and MOU before I-
Is it possible to just confirm that parents and teens have been included on the task force?
That's over to the Assistant City Manager.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, we hosted multiple focus groups with a number of parents and students in this process. It was all conducted-
Are they members of the task force?
I'm sorry?
Are they members of the task force?
They were not members of the task force. They, there was a lot of discussion on fear of students feeling intimidated, not being able to speak, and so the focus were held separately and not with anybody involved in the task force, except with the exception of Dr. Lori Ross, who conducted those focus groups separately.
Thank you.
So, I do know that we have a youth council, and so is there a way to kind of pull youth council in there? I know you'd be able to do it.
The youth council was the first group, the first focus group. Yeah, we work with Raquel very well on that.
Vice Chair Kamara. Thank you. I'm also aware of like the, what is it, Free WPS, the group.
Racism Free WPS, yeah.
Thank you, it was a hard day today. So, if we can, you know, include them or if they would like to be on that conversation, because I know that one of the items that we have on our agenda was about safety in the public schools.
Yep. And I was also thinking of the various advisory groups that we have. The school committee actually has an advisory group, which is, results in our student representative, and the superintendent has an advisory group as well.
Right.
So, yeah. More people to bring to the table. Excellent. Anything else that either of you want to make sure? Okay.
Perfect.
Make your orders and I'll make, because I've got to vote mine.
Well, one more thing, I did wanted to bring up in regards to the report is that, you know, aside from the MOU and the policy, there was a lot of mentioning about, you know, enhancing school climate, and so they also talked about community-based justice, kind of holistic models and transformative justice models. And, you know, I think with this, you know, reimagining of SLOs, I think we could also reimagine what it looks like to think about our school disciplinary methods, and I really want to bring that to the table, to our school committee members, to really think about, you know, how do we start shifting culture? What would that look like? And so, I just wanted to open that up for any creative thoughts, anything that y'all could think about when we try to kind of make this shift, because I think it's an amazing thing to think about, you know, removing SROs, but what is the replacement that actually enhances school climate?
Yeah, I'd be glad to at least start with, with a motion on our side to ask for a report of what currently is being done. The, my understanding is that to the degree that that's happening, it's happening very much at the sort of granular, school-based level, rather than anything larger at the district level. But to at least say where are we, and then how do we move forward from there? Does it seem as if that would be a place to start to answer your question? Chair? You would? Okay. Want to make sure we're answering your question before we put the motion on our side? Yes, Vice Chair Kamara.
Thank you, to the chair. So, yeah, so I think that also, because I have my notes here, that's from what Counselor Calor mentioned in terms of like training, like what sorts of training that, again, on cultural, you know, trauma-informed, and there's a list that you did mention. So, it would be, you know, great if we can get, you know, more information from that, from the city, or from the police chief, the, not just the title, but a little bit of probably, I would like at least where I can find to read more on those types of trainings that we have, and if we can, if we can embed, you know, the cultural climate that Counselor Tuan Nguyen is also mentioning in that area too, would be good.
You have that as your order, right? Because that would be coming from the police side? Okay. Are you asking that for a motion? Right, okay. So, I'll, we'll ask for the information on our side, we'll ask for the information on your side. It sounds as if we're ending up with a motion that we probably want to hold. Okay, which is good. Anything else? All right, so, we will need to roll call ours. So, the two motions that I see, and by all means, colleagues, if I'm missing something here, let me know, is to request administration give a full update on the school safety data as collected by Professor Ross and the School Safety Task Force. And then the item is to request administration report on current restorative justice practices. Is that okay phrasing for you? Or something else?
I would say community-based justice.
Community-based justice? Yep. Community-based justice practices currently being used by the Worcester Public Schools. On those two items, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Chairman O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara? And Member Mailman?
Yes.
And the will, oh, sorry, and I should say, we will also hold that item. Sorry, can we roll call that too, before we forget?
Vice Chair O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Yep.
And Member Mailman?
Yes.
All right, so on our end, AJ, would you mind rereading the chairman's orders?
Of course, Counselor. So, at this point, I have the two chairman's orders of request the city manager work with the School Safety Task Force, just write a report on the various data being collected and measuring SLO interventions. I have requests city manager, request city solicitor provide city council with a legal opinion relative to, I think, I kind of just have notes there, but the legal standing of whether the statewide MOU should be in place or if there should be something more Worcester-specific.
So, just a correction on that, it would be that, you know, are we obligated to adopt the state MOU currently as we, you know, move towards creating a Worcester-specific MOU?
Perfect, that is great. Thank you. Okay, so I got both of those, and then I'm not sure what, if you wanted to put in any more, or a motion to hold the item or file the item.
So, Counselor Calorio also had a motion or an order that we would like to add as a chairman's order? Would you mind rereading yours?
Yes, it was on, one was the information which I think we covered in the first chairman's order, but the second one was what Gemma and I kind of was on the same page with having a little bit more of a detailed training, understanding of what actual training courses, classes, et cetera, is going to be used for the SLOs.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so those three chairman's orders, and then Counselor, whatever motion you'd like to make as it relates to the item.
Sweet. Yes, we would like to hold it, roll call.
Very good. Counselor Calorio?
Yes.
And Chair Person, Counselor.
Yes.
Great. So, I think, is this all over to us now? Okay. So, we actually have two items that we have here that we want to bring to our colleagues' attention. The first is, was actually filed by my colleague, Member Mailman, request the administration evaluate and update compensation practices whereby school committee members are compensated at 50% of the city council level. And I want to note, just for informational purposes, that when this was raised within the school committee, Mayor Petty did himself send the item to the city solicitor for an update on how changes in compensation are made. Everyone who's here is aware that it has to be done through the municipal charter, but the municipal charter, of course, is your side of the table, not ours, which is why we bring the conversation here. And so, I was going to first turn, as she was the one who filed the item, to Member Mailman for comment.
So, I think it's a timely item. You know, when I, when it dawned on me, I don't know when somebody told me, oh, school committee makes 50% of city council, and it seemed very arbitrary to me. And it also, in the back of my mind, seemed like, hmm, that's interesting. A little, you know, the council is here, the school committee is here, because they're schools, and that's more, you know, this more female-dominated, and so there's a level of sexism that came into this decision. I have no idea how long this practice has been in place, but it strikes me as out of bounds right now. I'm, and so I thought that it should be an item that's discussed, especially in light of the districts that we're going to be talking about, and especially in light of people making decisions about running for district seats. We should know what that compensation is, and we should have a highlight on it. These are, I was told this is something we probably don't want to talk about because the public won't appreciate it, but I think that it is something that we should be talking about, because I think the public should be aware of it, and I think that people running for councils should be aware and make informed decisions about what they'd like to do for, to participate in government.
Vice Chair Kamara, anything to add? You can say no, it's okay.
I do have something to add. So, on to what school committee member, Mailman, just mentioned, I want to ask, and just for advice, or if anyone knows the idea, is this okay that we look at the whole charter for the city? Because if we're going to look at it just for a piece of it, are there other things, perhaps, that we need to consider too, that we can take a dive into? But I don't know what that legal question is.
I mean, not under the purview of this item, but, I mean-
That's why I was like smiling.
Yep.
Yeah, just, just to respond to that, I was going to put in a chairman's order to request the city manager, to request the city solicitor provide a legal report on the possibility and process of changing our city charter in regards to elected official salary, just so that it's a more kind of open conversation or open methodology. I'm not fully sure of reviewing the whole city charter. I think we would have to wait for this report, but that was going to be my item or my chairman's order on that.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Counselor Calor?
Thank you. Being the only member here that's served on both bodies, when I first got elected to school committee, I was like, wow, is this discrepancy of what we get paid and what city councils get paid? We'd met less, not as much as city council meets, and, you know, what was told to me is that though, there's more work involved in, in being a city counselor, but yet I worked really hard being a school committee member. So, I do not, I'm not sure I buy into that. But I think that our rates are not, like, if you compare what we make and what Boston makes, or other towns or cities, sometimes our rates are not comparable. So, it is a very touchy subject. I can tell you, my constituents would weigh in very heavily on this, and, you know, it's the people that we serve that we have to be accountable for. And so, I think it is a sensitive subject, bringing it up, and I'm sure it will create a lot of dialogue and discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Calorio, and I agree. I think it is, it's a worthwhile conversation, I think, especially when we start moving towards thinking about equity, and when we think about, you know, who we want to be And when we think about, you know, who we want to be elected into this type of body, right? As well as what kind of commitment we're asking for our folks. Counselor Calorio, you mentioned, you know, doing very much a lot of work, you know? And so I think when we send the message of, you know, a, a lower pay scale, whether that's school committee in connection to city council or city council, you know, of Worcester to Boston, I think these are important conversations to have. Um, and that's why I hope y'all aren't, you know, aren't upset that I switched it to just talking about elected official salary because I think right now we are talking about like, this is work. This is work that needs to be, um, recognized. And it's also work that we want multiple people to have access to. We want people who are committed to this work, who are put in the hours, um, who this would allow them, the resources of finances in a capitalistic world would allow them to really dedicate, um, their time, you know, so that they're not pulled between like constituent, um, kind of conversations and policy. Like we want people who can do it all. And I think financial resources and a city commitment to actually doing that is a, once again, a worthwhile conversation. And so, um, I would like to put that chairman's order in. Is there anything else that, um, would like to be added to that?
I ju, I, I appreciate the order and I appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't want to lose sight of the discrepancy though, when that item goes forward. Thank you.
Great. No, and thank you for embracing the discussion because I, I think the way that it's being framed is actually really very, very important. So long as we continue to sort of fund elected office in the city as something that everybody has to do on the side and yet needs to have access to time and, you know, vehicles and other kinds of resources, we, we absolutely put a barrier up in terms of who can serve.
Yeah, and I just want to respond, you know, I think, um, Member Mailman, what you mentioned about like tradition, right? Like the ways in which like, yes, maybe a while ago it made sense, right? But what if we switch the tradition and the model where school committee members, you know, do very equivalent work? You know, we don't have to think of the tradition of like school member, school committee members doing 50% of our work, you know? What if it actually is equal? And so how do we actually remodel that? Um, I think that's a very important conversations too.
Right. Did you already do your order on that? Are we set?
AJ, are we all set?
I've got it, yep, all set, thank you.
All right, so then on our side, since we've done our handoff, are we kosher with making, with my making a motion to file? Okay. Okay, so Madam Chair, can we call a roll on a motion to file on that one, please?
Chair O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Yes.
And Member Mailman?
Yes.
All right, and then the next item that we have is GB 2-115, which is to request city council, ensure city council and school committee districts are parallel so as to ensure public clarity. And briefly, because I think that, after the maps came out last week, I'm not sure this needs necessarily a lot more introduction than that. It, I, I filed this item because the, the concern that I have, um, is that we have, um, moved in a direction that is intended to be positive, that is intended to make, um, school committee more accessible, um, more representative. And yet, in the process of doing so, at least so far, appear to be creating a city governance system, um, that is much more difficult to, um, sort out and understand and effectively then access. And it, it seems to me that, that someone needed to formally ask the city council to, to fix this, since only the city council can with the assistance, of course, of the state legislature. And so that, that's really where this is coming from, which is to say, the school committee wishes to make sure that we are, um, accessible and representative, but we want to make sure that our government as a whole is also accessible and representative. And in the process of making the school committee one of those things, we want to make sure that we don't, um, upset the apple cart such that we end up with something that's actually, you know, even more confusing at the end of it. Now defer to my colleagues if they have anything they want to add to that.
I don't have, I, uh, I guess the only thing that I had to, in, sorry, was whether or not we have someone, um, from like the NWSCP to talk about, but that's not the item? No?
Not really, really. I mean, I think that we're all saying, we understand what's happening on our side, but we're saying that let's make sure that we're not drawing lines that make it more confusing.
Right, okay.
That's all.
That's, I don't have anything.
Could you clarify, could you just clarify? I'm not sure, I'm a little lost, sorry.
Sure.
Member Mailman, I just don't understand if you could just verify what you're asking for.
Sure. So right now, um, the, the, um, the plan is for there to be school, six school committee districts, two at-large school committee seats. There has been however, no plan to change the city council to be reflective in the way the school committee is proposed to be. And thus people will live in one of five city council districts, but one of six school committee districts. And the map that, and thank you by the way for sharing that with us clerk's office, um, that this clerk's office came out with last week, made it, I think, very clear to all of us, um, that that's going to create a very confusing reality, um, for really all of our constituents, which we all share, um, since everybody on these committees is at large. And I think that that's concerning. Member Mailman, I think we.
I just wanted to add that I had attended a couple at least of the multiple MO meetings this past summer, I think. And pretty much that was the commentary from the public that showed up at those meetings. In addition, actually Counselor Calorio and I were just at the first, um, meeting held at the Unitarian Church, and that was a, a theme as well at that meeting. So I think, and I think my comment at the meeting was, you know, we should, and you said it better Tracy, this should be a government that we, that is not more confusing. And some, I've heard some people say, well, it's only a little confusing and it will only be for a little while. That's not good enough in my mind. I mean, we should be doing everything we can. We know we have voter, um, apathy or we haven't engaged our voters as much as we should. And I think instead of saying, oh, it won't be that bad, we should be saying, we have an opportunity to make it better and we have an opportunity to, um, to have a discussion around the whole form of government that we have here. So I, I appreciate that this order is on and, um, hope that you will have some discussion at council. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Calorio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, while I understand it is confusing, um, we were asked as a council to make, to work with this lawsuit. And as we work through the process, the only way we could, we could make sure that we fulfilled our obligation for the two districts were to create the six district counselors with the two at-large seats. That way we did fulfill our obligations as a lawsuit. That being said, sometimes things have consequences, unintended consequences. And I think what you're experiencing now is that people are going to have confusion. Now, the city council was not sued, so our organization is not in question right now. So what we're focusing on right now, I'm, just speak for myself, is to make sure that we can have the transition process, that people understand that they will have maybe be in one district for city council and be in another district school committee, but that's, to educate the public is going to, and I agree with you all, is going to take a little work and it's confusing. So moving forward, it would be the will of the council if they wanted to move in that direction. And I, right now, we have seen nothing that has indicated that. So I think that I'd like to focus, and I mentioned this the other night, that on the positive thing is that we did fulfill this and we didn't go to, you know, a lawsuit. I mean, we didn't go, you know, we didn't go to litigation. We were able to resolve this. We took all the positions into account and we came up with a solution that was agreed upon all cases. So I'd like to think that we have moved in the right direction and we're coming to a positive solution. So that being said, I mean, that's how I see it right now, is I see it as what we've done so far and where we're going on this.
Yeah, I thi, I think it's probably better if the governing body doesn't wait to be sued to make fixes. And that's what we did in Worcester. And I think that we can be proactive and fix problems before someone has to sue us to fix them. It is under the city council's purview to, to move towards charter change, to actually change, to change their districts. The fact that the six districts, um, are as different as they are from the council districts, I know there's always a reconsideration of the council districts regularly as well, but should be indicative, I think, of, um, a question being in the council's mind as to whether or not they actually are as representative as they should be. So, uh, also the notion that we should, I don't know, pat ourselves on the back about, you know, having not had to go to court is, is troubling to me, I will say, as, as an elected official of the city. So if we are going to have to have a transition, um, you know, any, anyone, any educator would tell you that it's easier to have a single transition rather than to have multiple ones. Uh, and I think that let's make the change, but let's make it all at once and let's make it all together. I think you had, Vice Chair Kamara, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, like what I was also going to say was to your lines too. I think like, um, we have this opportunity, this perfect opportunity, um, to not just, you know, get sued and then provide the, you know, the minimum of what the lawsuit is smelling now, but for us to go a little bit further, you know, in lines of, um, aligning things so we are less, so we're confusing less people. Because to be honest with you, um, I think even the way how the system is currently set up, only a very few people in the city knows what's, what's going on with, um, city council, school committee, I mean, is very disturbing sometimes, but without any fault of anyone in the city. And then to now be in a position where we can actually make things less confusing for people, especially my, you know, the minority communities that so needs this information and creating anything so difficult that will never get them to the polls. I think we need to, um, make things as simple as possible, um, for members of our community. And if it means that, um, we make it as simple as possible in this nature, um, I think that would be, you know, preferable. And I, we're asking the council, um, you know, and the city manager and all those in power to please consider that.
Yeah, I would like to echo, um, a lot of the things I've heard in public spaces and people who reach out to me is that, you know, it's, it's complicated. It's just too complicated to wrap their heads around. And, you know, I also think, you know, all of us here are elected officials, and so we know what it's like to door knock and what it's like to talk to voters. I mean, y'all are as an expert of getting out the vote as I am, right? Um, and so I just want to uplift that, you know, like we know that right now for our local elections, we do not have a 20% mark of people who vote. I remember talking to voters and I would have to, they would ask me where do they vote? And I'd be like, did you vote for the president? They're like, yes. And I'm like, similar place, right? Now, if we have that conversation and, you know, they don't really understand the different districts and stuff, it becomes way more complicated for folks. And I agree with, um, school committee member, um, Gemma Kamara, is that like the simpler, the better. We're trying to get people engaged. And I think the more that we make it complicated, the, in, the less accessible it is, the less, um, engaging we could actually bring out to people. As well as, you know, I think we need to learn lessons from what happened, right? As, um, school committee member, Novick said, it's like, I think we have to learn to lead and to do it better, um, and not to just be reactive to things. And I know that, you know, it is at the end of the day, um, the, you know, the will of the council, and there hasn't been quite, you know, any shifts. But I do hope that with more information, you know, with the districts that have been shown, that we actually digest the information and think about how it's going to impact our folks. I think that we really need to consider our voters and our constituents and not just, you know, what is going to be easy for council, what is tradition. Um, and I think that as mo, as many people said, that, you know, changes happen, like it's easier when it's all at once. The last thing we need is to do a shift now and then years down the line, have to re-educate people. You know, this re-educating folks actually loses so many folks. It loses a lot of voters. Um, and so, you know, even if it's the will of the council, I would like to support, um, our school committee members, um, as experts of doing this. Um, and that I would like to do a chairman's order to request very similar order. I'll just pass it off if you wanted to read it.
Your order too, because I, I did miss the first meeting at the Unitarian University Church. But I, there's a couple that's coming up. And I think one of the items that it also had on there was about, um, not just, uh, making things align, but, or it was also about, um, voting locations, right? So like, um, to have diverse voting locations. I know the city does a great job, right? With, you know, all the locations that we currently have, um, but it'll be great, you know, to kind of learn from COVID-19 and all the outreach we've done in diverse neighborhoods to have, um, the polling locations in those areas as well. Where, what people know and have them, where people live and learn and know where things are, um, in their ethnic communities. I think we need to consider and think about how we can bring, um, polling locations to those communities as well.
And that was discussed at that meeting, so, yeah.
So, uh, AJ, just wanted to double check. So the chairman's order, sorry, um, is to request city council, ensure city council and school committee districts are parallel, um, as to ensure public clarity. And I believe, um, school member, school committee member Kamara just mentioned, um, a recommended order of, uh.
It sounds like they were, they were separate, they were almost separate ideas. So if you want to bring forward that, that second thought in the form of a chairman's order, essentially just asking for us to review the locations to ensure they're diverse, um, that can come through our office?
Yes. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, then I would make a motion to file our item. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please?
Chair, uh, Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Yes.
And Member Mailman?
Yes.
Excellent. And I did just want to say to my, to my council colleagues, we're, we're hoping to put together a joint meeting possibly this summer to, um, I know you've got items on facilities, we've got items on facilities, but to have a big meeting that's about facilities. So I'm hopeful that we can get that scheduled so that we can have that conversation as well.
Perfect. I also know that school committee are, is planning a meeting on the 25th around budget. And so I would like to encourage, um, you know, the public and other counselors, my colleagues, to really speak up around, you know, what we envision our schools to really allocate their budget for. I think it's really important that we all participate in this. I think, you know, when we think about the future of our schoolings, like we all have a hand in it. And so I would love to, um, once again, remind folks to come join if you want to give the exact details.
Sure, that's, so that would be the Worcester Public Schools budget hearing, which is at 5:00 PM, um, in person. It's at the Durkin Administration Building, which is 20 Irving Street, um, on the fourth floor. But you also can join us and give testimony via Zoom, and we'll have the link up as soon as we have the agenda. But Wednesday, the 25th at 5:00. Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, of course. All right, shall we do a motion to adjourn? All right, roll call.
Counselor Calorio?
Yes.
And Chairperson, Counselor Newman?
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call to adjourn?
Chair, Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kamara?
Yes.
And Member Mailman?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, wow, look at that. This is a joint meeting for what? I tell you.